Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the Blair County Commissioners Meeting for Tuesday, March 12th, 2024, and ask that you join me in a moment of silent reflection, please. If you would please join me to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the line of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Yes, there are public participants joining us by phone. If you could please state your name for the minutes, please.
Helen Schmidt.
Thank you, Helen.
Melissa Royster.
Thank you, Melissa. Is there anyone else joining us remotely at this time? I'm not hearing anyone else there. That is roll.
Okay, executive session announcement.
There were no executive sessions, I'm sorry, since the last meeting. Thank you.
Okay, move for the approval of the Board of Commissioners Meeting Minutes for 227 and 229.
Oh, you may not have gotten them. I'm sorry. You may not have gotten these. I'm sorry. We have to hold them till Thursday. Thank you.
So those are now on hold. Public comment.
Did you want to speak? Come on up to the microphone.
I don't have to comment about the last.
Yes, that's fine.
Sure.
My name is Margaret Eversole, and I got my county taxes in the mail last week and my city real estate taxes, both of which went up over 10%. I'd like to go on to record saying, of course, the Social Security, which is what I'm on because I'm retired and on a fixed income, did not go up over 10%. Also, the water bill's nearly doubled, and Pennsylvania is probably one of the highest taxed states in the whole United States, I think. But we're supposed to learn to live within our means, us retired elderly people that own property that are on Social Security, but it doesn't appear that the county offices or the city offices can live within their means because they continue to raise the millage on property taxes to get more money because they need to spend more money. I understand that your costs go up. Our costs go up too as citizens, but we always have to foot the bill because I don't think our county or our city manages the money properly, or we have way too many social programs that need to be at least reined in because somebody needs to think about the elderly and the senior citizens of this county and this city who are starving, who can't pay their bills because everything just continues to go up. And I myself, I know, I don't want to vote for anybody who can't manage money, and right now I don't see our county as managing money. That's my comment, and that's what I'm saying.
Ms. Eversole, you had, Ms. Eversole, you had submitted a public comment to our public comment@blairco.org email address.
I believe so, yes.
Do you still want me to read this statement, or does your in-person take care of what you wanted to say?
Take care of that.
Okay. I just want to make sure we were covered. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Yep. Commissioner comments.
Laura, you have anything?
Sure.
Ms. Burks.
Thank you. I would like to take this opportunity to express publicly my gratitude to Nathan Carn for the many years he has served Blair County. Solicitor Carn has been a law clerk, assistant solicitor and solicitor. His tenure here is more than 20 years long, which is remarkable given our current average tenure of seven years. Prior to becoming Commissioner, I did not know Attorney Carn very well. Over the course of the last four years, I came to appreciate not only his consistency in providing timely, risk averse legal advice, but also the vast amount of institutional knowledge he has regarding the county's idiosyncratic legal situations, which I fondly call Blair County specials. Nathan's value is apparent, not only in his day-to-day work on our legal issues, but also in his dedication to the operations of the county. A good example of this is the 2020 general election. Our Elections Director was too sick to be on-site on Election Day. This was the worst possible time this could happen. We had international eyes on our state. The other two members of the Board of Elections were substitutes due to COVID travel quarantines, and it was our first year handling mail-in ballots. Nathan jumped in performing many of the tasks that Sarah completes throughout the day that could not be done remotely, and he stayed long past the time he normally leaves. I think he was there until almost 11:00 PM that night. I also think of our experience in the Tax Claim Office. When we were unexpectedly without employees as of 4:00 PM on a Friday afternoon, Nathan was there on Monday morning explaining retzels to Nicole and I and making sure that we were on good legal foundation to continue operating the office in the absence of trained staff so that we could pull off our upset sale in a couple weeks with as few disruptions as possible. Finally, on a personal note, my husband Sean also works with Nathan in his role as solicitor to the Borough of Holidaysburg. It was mind-blowing to our oldest daughter when she realized that when she heard each of us mention Nathan, we were talking about the same person. She dubbed him the Nathan character and developed a mythology surrounding him that was shattered recently when she learned that he drives a pickup truck and has brown hair. To the Burke family, Solicitor Carn will always be Nathan character, and I will miss working with him. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Burks. I mean, Commissioner Royster, sorry.
That's okay. I echo Commissioner Burks' sentiments. I think that we all agree and understand that Attorney Carn, as well as the other attorneys representing other offices, Attorney Baker and Attorney Warner, have all provided very good service and advice to us. However, the Commissioners are looking at going in a different direction to attempt to rein in some of our costs, which our public speaker today made reference to. This is unfortunately a small step, but it's a step forward. But we do appreciate and thank those folks for all that they have done for us the last several years.
Thank you. I also would like to thank Nathan Carn, Jeff Merciak, Attorneys for Median Black, for the work that they've done in the very short period of time that I've been here, understanding that this law firm has represented Blair County for, I think, since the 1960s. As all of you in this room are aware, and as Margaret Eversole has come up here and indicated, we need to look out for the taxpayers of this county. When we reviewed the legal bills, the extensive legal bills that we have, that prompted us to start looking and questioning why, and that prompted us to make the move that we're making today. It's extensive. When you're spending $1.5 million in three years on legal bills, we think that's excessive. And then when we speak with other counties and what they're playing, it's, again, it's excessive. So it was a very hard decision, I think, for this board to make. We certainly don't like the way it's listed as a termination because, let's be very clear, we're very happy with what they performed with us. We have no complaints with their legal services. As it's been stated in the ELTUNAMIR, and as we discussed, this is purely a financial decision that we felt needs to be made to help move this county in a different direction. So that being said, would you want to run us through the consent agenda, please?
Right after the proclamation.
Proclamation.
We have a proclamation recognizing Pennsylvania's 4-H Week, which is March 17th through 23rd of 2024. Whereas 4-H is America's largest youth development organization, supporting nearly 6 million youth across the country, and whereas 4-H has helped over 910 youth here in Blair County to become confident, independent, resilient, and compassionate leaders as they learn by doing, and whereas 4-H in Pennsylvania is delivered by Penn State Cooperative Extension in rural areas, small towns, and cities in all 67 counties of the Commonwealth to more than 77,000 youth ages 5 through 18. And whereas 4-H youth in Blair County, Pennsylvania, are served by a network of staff members and more than 6,000 adult volunteers who engage and mentor youth in learning activities and hands-on projects in topics such as animal science, civic engagement, STEM, and health and wellness. And whereas Pennsylvania 4-H Week showcases the incredible ways that 4-H inspires kids to achieve and highlights the remarkable 4-H youth in the county who work each day to make a positive impact on those around them. And whereas 4-H's network provides youth with opportunities for leadership development, career exploration, problem-solving, friendships, community involvement, passion, and purpose. Now, therefore, we, the Blair County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim March 17 through 23, 2024, as Pennsylvania 4-H Week throughout Blair County, and encourage our citizens to acknowledge and celebrate 4-H for its valuable service and continued efforts to empower youth with a foundation of success for a lifetime. And I make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, would you be so kind?
I think we have a representative from 4-H. Do they want to?
There you are. You wanted to say something?
Give her a moment.
We just wanted to thank the Commissioners and the county for their support and continued involvement in 4-H. Commissioner Webster was able to join us for our awards ceremony last month to see us celebrate some of our young youth ages 5 through 18 here in the county, and we are expanding into broader topics. So 4-H is not just animal science and our livestock. We also do things like knitting and crochet and cooking in four different libraries in the county, and that's expanding. We do STEM, we do robotics, and marine science, which is my personal favorite. So we just want to let everyone know that we are so thankful for the support and that our 4-H program is growing and the youth are thriving.
Do you want to get a picture? Yeah, perfect.
You guys ready? All right, on three. One, two, three.
Now, if you would be so kind as to run us through the consent agenda, please.
I'd be honored. Today, this consent agenda is Resolution Number 119 of 2024. It's the payment of two warrant lists as outlined in your agenda in Item A, which do include payments to McCarroll's Preferred Services in the total amount of $150, and payment to Thomas and Chandra Jandora in the amount of $14.50. Ratification of 20 warrant lists as outlined in Item B, that does include a payment to Thomas and Chandra Jandora in the amount of $1,550. Ratification of total payroll for the check dated 3/8/24 in the total amount of $879,083.59. It's 2023 budget transfers in Items D, E, and E, 2024 budget transfers in Items F and G. It's resignations, one rescinded resignation, the terminations, employments, and status changes as outlined in your agenda in Item H, I, J, K, and L, respectively.
Okay. I move for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I am abstaining to the payments to McCarroll's Preferred Services and the two payments to Thomas and Chandra Jandora. I am a no on the termination of Nathan Carn, and I'm an aye on the remainder of the consent agenda.
Present.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
I'm requesting approval for the award or rejection of the bids received for two milk products for the Blair County prison.
And there is a missing word on the agenda. I apologize, Warden. The, we do need to accept the awards for, accept the bids today for award and rejection. So that was a typo on our part from the Commissioner's office. Do you want to talk about the bids? Not yet? Okay. Not yet? Okay. I wondered if we were ready for any, any action on them yet. So we would ask for a motion to accept the bids only for review and award or rejection at a later date.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the, for the milk.
To accept it.
Yes.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Our second item is requesting approval of the memorandum of understanding between the County of Blair and the Borough of Holidaysburg to grant access to specifically Detective Jeff Friday to our jail management system.
So I have some questions on this. I had asked that this be reviewed and changed, and the reason that is, is that we are, the memorandum of understanding is naming a specific individual, which I think is, I don't think that's the way to go. I think it should name the department. That way, if there's a change in the detective or if the chief there decides that someone else is going to do this, then we don't have to continue to change it. So we'll look at that and have some conversation. I don't have any problem with the concept. I think it's a good concept, and I think that we should do it. I just, the wording on it, for me, is problematic.
Okay.
My comment on that would be that we did consider both. I believe the original version did have the department. There was concern because of a history of the dissemination of personal identification information in materials that were provided to the police department, and so that was why I felt it was important to restrict it to a specific individual. So I guess, depending on how that goes through the review process, you know how I'd vote.
Good.
Third, requesting approval of the amendment to the comprehensive health service agreements between the County of Blair, Prime Care Medical, to establish a medication-assisted treatment at $12 a day per inmate plus any additional MAT-related costs. We were at that time that it's time for us to try to put an MAT program in place. I asked Judy to join us today. She was kind enough to apply for a grant for us for the first two years. We've already reached Year One and haven't got our program underway. She can speak more to that, what her plan is to try to extend that money, those monies. But her office is down to be helping us out with the counseling and the treatment part of things and getting, and connecting people on the outside after care and all those sorts of items. So again, we're at, we're at that time in life.
So let me ask you, having some knowledge with this, is this now a requirement by law or is it still going through the legal process?
It's still going through the legal process. I'm not sure if Edwards is doing MAT yet, but if they're not, we might be one of the last to withdraw. We, I get contacted about a couple times a month from different agencies, different law firms, asking when, what we're doing, those sorts of questions. I think we, I anticipate that it will be something that we have to do, and I would like to have a program in place that I'm comfortable with before that happens.
And I applaud those efforts, and I agree with that. I'm glad that Ms. Royster is here because I, having knowledge with this, is we want to help people any way that we can. However, in this particular, the MAT, medicated assisted treatment, it's, if you can speak of the cost, it's expensive, and so we thank you very much for the grants opportunity because, again, that's helping defer costs that taxpayers aren't paying. But I don't know if you have the numbers, but if you could give some of the numbers, that would be helpful so people understand the impact.
You're talking numbers coming in the prison?
Well, just the, the amount of money to do the treatment and counseling and things like that.
Yeah. As far as medicated assisted treatment, we're talking about the three primary ones that are used for opiate use disorder, which are buprenorphine, which goes by other names as Subytext or Suboxone. We're talking SUBLOCADE, which is actually an injectable buprenorphine form. It's once a month, really does distract from diversion. VIVITROL is another. It's a non-antagonist drug, which means it's not, it's not an opioid. It's actually a drug that sits on the receptor sites and blocks the effects of, and also the cravings for opiates. And then also would be methadone. And so those costs, for example, methadone in the community would cost about $95 a week for methadone. Now, we do know only about two to three, maybe four folks come in, and already the prison is using methadone for their pregnant women because it is best practice for somebody who's pregnant to be on some type of medicated assisted treatment if they have an opiate use disorder in order not precipitate a miscarriage for that individual through withdrawal. So they've been using that for years and have a good process in place for that. Testing, of course, you're looking at UAs, you're looking at lab work. For example, in a year's budget, we had in there drug testing about 4,500, lab panels, we had about 6,000. We had for buprenorphine for just the pill form was about over 5,000. For methadone, about 23,000. SUBLOCADE was 45,000. SUBLOCADE, VIVITROL are most expensive, but they're also the least manpowered, exhausting medications, meaning whereas SUBLOCADE has to be dosed daily and methadone has to be dosed daily, so you have a movement and management of the inmates on a regular daily base and have to manage that through your, your staff and your criminal or your, your correction officers. VIVITROL and SUBLOCADE are once-a-month injections, and so they're, they're onboarded, and then they slowly dissolve through the process, through the body throughout the year and keep them stable. So there's less diversion there also, which the other, of course, buprenorphine has those issues. So, for example, in the first year, we also built in an RN, a registered nurse, if they came up to managing over 25 inmates per day. So we were looking at about $192,000 just for those pieces in that grant that first year was what we were trying to help offset some of those costs. Is that what you, is that enough, sir?
Yeah, I just, I think it's important for people to understand the cost of this, of these things, and I agree with the Warden. I think that at some point, it's, we're going to be made to do it, and I appreciate and applaud your efforts to start putting something in the process. And so if, and if I'm correct, it's been my experience, that people who, who are on an opioid or a drug, they come into a prison, they go through a withdrawal, and the problem is that these individuals, then upon release, go out to get a high, and that's generally they're, they're dying because of that.
They're targets.
Yeah, they're trying to get the same amount as when they came in. It should also be noted that we're not going to start inductions at this time, so we're not going to be starting someone on the medication while they're in the prison. We're also going to be drug testing them when they come in. If they tell us they have a script, if they test positive for any illicit drugs, we will not be placing them in the program. If they have a script that we can't confirm or isn't valid, or they haven't used, you know, within a reasonable timeframe, we'll not be placing them in the program. We're going to try to get this started using the staff we have as far as nursing bills, a Conamali 525 number, and see what we can do with what we have.
I do want to state that those costs that I gave you were related to just those that we felt might be on the program that are coming in the door already on a medicated assisted treatment.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Can I ask a question? You mentioned that methadone is already in use for pregnant inmates. Do we also use VIVITROL already?
We do. We've been using, we're one of the first counties to use VIVITROL. We still, we still use it, and Judy's office has been very, very helpful in that process.
So would whatever costs we're already paying for those be assumed by the grant or is this on top of those numbers?
They'd be on top because you can't supplant stuff that you've already been paying for.
So it's for expanded services?
Yes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And I think I just want to clarify, and Judy, thank you for going after every grant opportunity that you have to, you've been able to secure quite a nice sum for what would be Year Two of your grant, but Year One for the county to start off. It's, it's important for the board to decide after that grant runs out how this will be paid for. This is an eligible expenditure under Exhibit E in opioid settlement funds, and I would like to write that into the resolution so we don't have to bring that back at a later date to use those funds. So if we have some direction on funding post-grant, I would appreciate that as well.
Could I, maybe before Thursday, you could give us clarification on how the expiration dates of the settlement money would play into use of it for this.
I'll get further clarification on your question and get you an answer, yes. Sure.
And just, yes, I would like to see us continue, obviously, with the use of whatever grant funds are available for us, however, we can do that in order to reduce any burden on our taxpayers.
Any other comments for the Warden questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Human Resources, Catherine.
I'm here to request your approval on a last chance agreement between County of Blair and the SEIU Local 668, which represents custodial highway maintenance.
And it says on here, there's no cost to the county.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve that. May I get a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Fort Roberto, Glenn.
It's Emily.
It's Emily. How are you, Emily?
I'm good. Glenn is on his way to a conference, so I'm standing in. He was here this morning, yeah. So Fort Roberto is requesting approval of an advertising agreement between County of Blair and Where and When for a summer and fall fourth-page advertisement in the total amount of $1,486 even. I will add Where and When is local to Blair County. They highlight a bunch of other locations as well, but they also spread throughout the entirety of Pennsylvania and often have their pamphlets and brochures in like turnpike rest areas as well, so it reaches more than just Pennsylvania as well.
Any comments or questions for Emily? All right, thank you very much.
I'm gonna just pause a minute while Mindy is walking up. The Zoom call will end in 10 minutes because we're cheap and we bought the free version. We purchased the free version. So if anyone's on the call that wants to rejoin, when, when it does cut you off, go ahead and call back in. Give me maybe 20 seconds to dial back in and then call back in. So just wanted to, public service announcement. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, guys. We're just requesting approval of fiscal year '23, '24 renewal purchase of service agreement and HIPAA Business Associate Agreement between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth and Families, and Presley Ridge. between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth and Families and Presley Ridge.
Any comments or questions? All right, thank you very much. Sarah on elections.
Hello.
Afternoon.
Uh, requesting approval of an agreement between the County of Blair on behalf of the Board of Elections and Election System and Software LLC, a Delaware limited liability company for coding uh the twenty-twenty-four presidential primary and election ballot with coding fees as outlined in the contract and twelve days of online, of onsite support and the total amount of thirty-four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
Any comments or questions for Sarah?
This covers both primary day and the general election day.
Correct.
And this is one of our expenses that the election grant might cover part of it.
Yes, we will submit it for the grant.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Adult probation and parole.
Excuse me, we're requesting to accept the PCCD grant made between the County of Blair and Blair County probation and parole in the total amount of seventy thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
It's just an annual grant, Scott?
It is.
Okay. Any comments or questions for Scott?
Sorry, I'm scrolling. Um, how, how does this compare in what we received last year?
I believe it's been almost identical to the same amount uh the past several years.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
Finance, Lindsay.
Afternoon. All right, so I have two things on my agenda and one is dependent upon the other. Sort of. Um, so the first item, we are requesting approval of the allocation of opioid settlement funds to the specialty courts for twenty-twenty-three expenditures. This runs through December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-three um in the amount of three hundred twenty-two thousand seven hundred thirty-three dollars and eighty-one cents.
Lindsay, I'm, I'm completely understanding I'm asking you a question about the second one, but since they're dependent on each other, when is the report due?
March fifteenth.
Okay, so do you feel comfortable letting this go to Thursday or would you ask for the board's approval today?
I'm fine with it going to Thursday.
Oh, you are a risk taker. Oh, okay.
I actually already have the report filled out and ready to go. I just have to close.
Okay, so good.
A planner. Okay, any comments or questions for Lindsay?
Um, I do, well, maybe a comment. Um, again, I'm scrolling. Um, I think I saw on here the amount we have left uh once this is put in was six hundred some thousand. Can you give, what are the deadlines for spending that amount?
The six hundred seventeen. Um, that would be a portion is going to be um due December of twenty-four. And then the other portion will be December of June of twenty-five.
So December or June of twenty-five?
I believe it's June of twenty-five because it's eighteen months.
And I think our original deadline was something like September, but we've, we've taken care of that portion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, number two. Um, so requesting approval to submit the twenty-two, twenty-three allocation report um to the PA Opioid Abatement Trust. And this is done through electronically, so we don't have to sign anything, just approval to sign.
And you've already agreed, we can do that on Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Public Works?
That would be me today. As you all know, we, we have been dealing with the issue of bridge number sixty-nine, which um needs to be replaced and we've been working diligently towards, towards getting that um in a position where we can. One of the first things that we do along with the engineering is obtaining rights of way from the property owners who are affected, whose property is adjoining or a part, and part of the um, the project itself. In this case, there are five property owners um on each of the properties. There are temporary easements as well as permanent easements. The temporary ones are during the construction time only and the permanent ones are ones that are for access to and, and to the bridge itself, to the repaired, completed, completely redone bridge itself. So this resolution that um we have provided here today requests that we authorize and accept those temporary and permanent easements in order that we can continue the project along. Um, I am happy to report that not only was I able to get all five property owners to sign completely, um, there were liens, mortgages on a couple of the properties. And one of the properties that had a mortgage had mortgages with Wells Fargo, a nationwide organization, as well as with the Housing and Urban Development Department of the United States. So um it is difficult to get um quick movement from, from those particular entities, but they actually were very helpful and um they did make sure that they got things done. And as of yesterday, I actually received the releases from um Housing and Urban Development and Wells Fargo. So we have all the paperwork that we need to proceed in terms of the rights of way. And um I'm asking that um we approve the resolution that accepts the rights of way, uh pays the people for their um interest in the property that, that we are taking in lieu of condemnation. And will then allow us to record these and um continue the project. Okay, anybody have any questions?
Okay, all right.
Because this is going to end in forty-five seconds and I have to talk, so I'm going to just take a moment to pause, stop those, stop this Zoom meeting and then restart back in. So if someone could sing and someone else could dance, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
We can all sing the national anthem, can't we? Okay. America the Beautiful, that's easier. No wheels, okay.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your participant ID followed by town. Otherwise, please enter the meeting password followed by. You are in the meeting now. You are the first participant. Please stand by. You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six. You are unmuted.
Technology's great when it's working.
Well, it's nice that this is the free.
This meeting is being recorded.
We are good.
All right, Nicole.
For the uh first item under commissioners today, we are requesting, um, this is moved out of the Park and Recreation Advisory Board that was held uh last Thursday, March, I believe that would have been the seventh, if not the eighth. The AYSO, the American Youth Soccer Organization Region Four Fifty-Two, uh, did bring, provide their field use calendar for twenty-twenty-four, which is uh required under the lease for AYSO between, the lease between the uh Blair County and AYSO. We have, um, they have a right to choose the times that they're going to utilize the field first. And then if any other groups or organizations want to um approach the Park and Recreation Board or the commissioners, uh, via the commissioners, they can uh request to use the times prior to or thereafter for uh whatever AYSO has already reserved. So this is coming out of Park and Recreation Board. They have um recommended this for approval to the Board of Commissioners.
Anyone have your questions?
I can wait till Thursday. Uh, the second item is requesting approval of a letter of support for the Family Services Incorporated Grant Application to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, or PCCD. This is for the full-time employment of the child, Children's Advocacy Center forensic interviewer. Uh, this is um a benefit to the county at no cost to the county. They just ask for a letter of support each year to accompany their grant application.
Comments or questions?
I would just comment, um Richie Servello had offered to be here in person. I think I may have been the person who dropped the ball on letting him know it was scheduled today, but I'm sorry. Um, we, the CYF office does work very closely with the CAC uh to um make sure these interviews are happening. Um, and it has been a tremendous benefit to have the CAC locally instead of having to drive kids to Bellmont. So um we like to support them when we can.
All right, thank you.
Uh, the third item today was an item requested um to be put on the agenda by the commissioners, requesting approval of a fee agreement letter received from Gabriel Farah PC for the Solicitor Services in a not to exceed amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the calendar year of twenty-twenty-four. Uh, the out-of-pocket costs such as travel reimbursement, any filing fees, excessive copying, those sort of things will be um in addition to the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the rates uh will be listed um on the, as, as listed on the agenda there, it is not to exceed. So they will bill us as uh legal services, um, or how the arrangement is uh put forth today is they will bill us hourly until that one hundred and fifty thousand dollar cap for twenty-twenty-four.
Any comments or questions?
I will comment um that the twenty-twenty-four budget for the solicitors Nathan Korn and Jeff Mercyak totals a hundred thirty-one thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. This includes their salaries, medical benefits, um, some equipment and office supplies um that they use at their firm for the benefit of the services they provide the county. I do not believe this was factored into the numbers um that Commissioner Kessling was providing earlier today or when we were um reviewing this decision. I also um would like to say that I think if we were solely replacing our labor council, McNeese, Wallace and Campbell Durant with Gabriel Farah, I would be totally on board. Um, that would be a savings of around a hundred fifty thousand dollars. If you look at um the year-over-year numbers and take out the amounts that are reimbursed by either the state or federal government, the total spent on legal services, um, not including Jeff and Nathan for twenty-twenty-three was three hundred thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. So we would still be seeing um a hundred fifty thousand dollars in savings, um, assuming that number stayed steady for twenty-twenty-four. Additionally, um, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two numbers um were higher. So twenty-twenty-one, the total amount, and this is including um numbers that would be reduced based on state reimbursement, but um twenty-twenty-one was five hundred eleven thousand, uh, twenty-twenty-two was four hundred eighty-eight and twenty-twenty-three was four seventy-seven. So those numbers were trending lower, although I will agree, um, are higher than they should be for labor council. So again, I um am not supportive of moving the Solicitor Service as a whole, um, although I would have supported moving the Labor Council um alone. I think that this is being done backwards, um, and I don't think that it was uh well researched or well thought through.
I don't have the numbers you do, so.
Okay.
I will defer to you.
We, we as a Board of Commissioners, the three of us, have sat down and discussed this and that's why we are here today um in the position that we're in. So the numbers, again, first of all, I, I pulled Munis for the total expenses for uh Nathan and Jeff, the solicitors, and for their salaries, their wages, Medicare and, or their retirement and their medical. I could be wrong, but off of Munis, it's a hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars and twenty cents. So that in itself exceeds what this law firm is going to do to come in to represent all of their, our legal services. Again, we've stated to this and we've talked about this and, you know, when we're looking at almost one point five million dollars, it's one point four seven seven million dollars in legal fees over three years. That's excessive. Now, when we further did the research, you know, a, a chunk of that is six hundred and forty-six thousand two hundred twenty-two dollars and sixty-five cents of CYF services, which is also handled by Evie and Black. When you take that figure out, we're still paying as a county eight hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-nine cents for legal services. So Margaret, it's a great day that you came here and I appreciate it because you're correct. I think as county commissioners, as leaders, we have to be responsible. This is not our money that we're spending. This is taxpayers' money. And when we look at that, and, and again, all three of us have sat in the room and we've discussed this, and we look at it from a, uh, from a financial standpoint, it makes no sense. It makes no sense that we're paying that much money. Uh, you know, with, and, and a lot of people were talking about the services of, of Nathan and, and Jeff again, which we have no issues with their performance. You know, that's been brought up a couple of times and our, our message is consistent across that. We don't have any issues with that. However, when you're a solicitor and you're boxing yourself into just specific things, and then we have to get services outside of that and pay additional legal fees because you don't cover those things, and we're looking at this as taking it under one umbrella with one law firm who can perform all this for significant savings that we hope that we can reinsert back into the county. I think it's a good decision. So uh, you know, I, I believe personally as being an elected official, people put me up here not to waste their money. And I don't, I think that by, when we look at these numbers, I'm not saying it's a waste. I'm thinking it's, I say it's excessive. And I think we as leaders have to do everything that we can to curb that, question that, and make the best decisions that we can. So again, I'll, I'll end by saying we have discussed this and we are where we are today. And I do think it's the right, uh, I, I do think it's the right decision. I understand that change is hard. It is. I, I think it's, change is hard for all of us, but I think sometimes change is needed. Uh, and this is one of the cases. I just think it's, we're just spending way too much money in legal fees that we don't have to. And I think that, um, you know, I don't think the taxpayers would like that either, so.
And I just, I concur with, with the comments made by Commissioner Kessling. I um, I am, I think it's important to note that the total amount that we will be paying for not only the Solicitor Services, but an, in addition, all of the Labor Council, which was two other law firms that we were dealing with, as well as the Assessment Appeals, which was another law firm. So we're talking about replacing all of the costs of all of those um firms with one firm that will do all of that work for an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is purely a financial decision, but it is a necessary decision. We commissioners have the responsibility to spend the taxpayers' money as wisely as. We Commissioners have the responsibility to spend the taxpayers' money as wisely as we can, and this is a step towards that kind of a direction. And yeah, your timing was pretty amazing today.
I would like to ask a point of clarification. I think Commissioner Kessling, is your position then that all of these savings will be passed on to the taxpayers?
I know, I'm not saying that, but they won't increase. I'm hoping that we can roll this money back into wages and salaries and other, and other things that we also need without increasing the taxes, because we're paying $1.477 million.
I also would like clarification. When we discussed this before, I asked what other options, whether we should look at other bids. I realize we don't have to bid out legal services, because it's a professional service, but did you talk to any other firms before making this decision?
I, like Commissioner Burke, we talked with some counties, which I don't remember, I think you asked her that question today, down in CCAP at the conference with her, but no, I did not.
So we have no comparisons, no other offers in terms of how much someone else would be willing to pay, be paid to do this work?
Again, I'll say that as the Commissioners, the three of us sitting up here, sat in a room, we discussed this, we've met with Gabriel Farah, and I believe that if there was any questions at that time with Commissioners in a room, it would have been discussed or brought up, and it was not.
Which I did, I believe I asked why we weren't considering other local firms that could perform that work, or other bids or quotes.
I do remember you saying local firms, but we've looked at that, too. Some firms here are good at certain things, and other firms are good at other things, but when you're trying to put everything under one umbrella, I don't know that there's any local firms that can do all of what we're asking, or all of what they're offering for the price that they're asking.
I think that there are probably some members of our bar association who would disagree with you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I am asking for, I'm going to make a motion to approve the fee agreements and changing from the Solicitor, from Evie and Black to Gabriel and Farah. I'll make the motion, I'm asking for a second.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Nay.
Urgency Services. You came up at the right time, too.
Good afternoon. Requesting approval of a preventive maintenance agreement between the County of Blair on behalf of the Department of Emergency Services and Pelco Power Systems for the maintenance of two generators for the 911 center in the total amount of $1,180.3. This is for one visit to maintain the two generators.
Any comments or questions, Sue? Okay.
Second, requesting approval of a critical end-user license agreement between the County of Blair and the Department of Emergency Services and Biddle Consulting Group Incorporated for the Test Genius Critical Skills Testing System in the total amount of $1,195 for the subscription period of May 1st, '24 through May 20th of '25. This is a software program that we use when we look at applicants to hire them.
Okay, any comments or questions, Sue?
And last but not least, requesting approval of professional services agreement between the County of Blair, Department of Emergency Services, and Mission Critical Partners LLC for the consulting services to the County of Blair as defined in Exhibit B of the said agreement not to exceed $25,000.
Sue, in looking at this agreement from our perspective, putting the agenda together, it was not clear in the agreement what the term of the agreement is. Is it the calendar year 2024? Does it start like April 1st? It's, our staff is not clear. And it might be something you, I can tell you, if you're looking in the documents, you're not going to find it.
Yeah.
So it might be something we need to clarify with Mission Critical, and I would request that it be added to the proposal, so we have, yeah, so we have that, so we know in Munis and
Yeah.
for budgeting purposes. I can get that for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm requesting approval of the 2023 Annual Report on Hazardous Materials Preparedness, HMERP report, to be entered into the ESA by myself, which serves as the HMRF Grant Application for July 2024 through June of 2025.
Any comments or questions? Thank you.
And I'm also requesting approval of a list of individuals seeking a five-year term membership from January 1st, 2024, to December 31st of 2028, to the Blair County Local Emergency Planning Committee as per Section 6022203B of Act 165, the Superfund Amendments and Reauthorization Act of 1986, and EPRA 42, U.S. Code 1101, and nominated to the Governor of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as outlined on the nomination form.
Any comments or questions? All right.
Thank you.
Old business.
Yes, this is a continuation of the discussion from two Thursdays ago. We're requesting approval of the Third Addendum to the Lease Agreement between the County of Blair, Blair Senior Services, for an additional parcel of land for expansion of the Blair Senior Services facility.
Any comments or questions?
These next, this one I don't mind if it hangs out on the agenda till Thursday, but the next three, I thought it was four, next three items do need action today as they need to go to Holidaysburg Borough for their borough meeting, which happens to be Thursday night, but it won't be in time for their agenda submission, so I want to make sure we get those to them today. The second item is requesting approval of a stormwater facilities perpetual maintenance agreement between the County of Blair, Blair Senior Services, and the Borough of Holidaysburg. If you remember, on Thursday, at least the first two items here, the next two items here with respect to the Blair Senior Services in Holidaysburg Borough, there was discussion last Thursday that solicitor, conflict solicitor, Patrick Finelli, did, did have changes to the agreement. I wanted to make sure that you had plenty of time to review those changes, because they were not accepted by the Holidaysburg Borough, and that you were comfortable accepting the documents as they were, as presented by the Holidaysburg Borough. And I hope at this time you've had a chance to do that, and if you have any questions, I can certainly help answer them.
I had made my comments at the last meeting.
Any other comments or questions? You seeking a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I will make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
I am in abstention due to conflicts with both Blair Senior Services and the Borough of Holidaysburg.
Okay.
And the next item is requesting approval of Land Development Plan, Plan Developers' Agreement for the Blair County Salt Shed, Blair County, Blair Senior Services Maintenance Building, between the Blair County of Blair, Blair Senior Services, Inc., and the Borough of Holidaysburg. Again, the same comment as the last, Holidaysburg Borough did not accept any changes on that, but the documents are for your consideration.
Comments or questions? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. I'm abstention due to conflicts with Blair Senior Services and the Borough of Holidaysburg. And the last item today is signing the signature on the title sheet. This is on the Land Development Plan signature on the title sheet between the County of Blair, Blair Senior Services, and the Borough of Holidaysburg. There were no legal comments on this, those were able to be changed, so this is as, as prepared by legal counsel and architects.
Okay, comments or questions? Make the motion to approve?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
I'm abstention due to conflicts with Blair Senior Services and the Borough of Holidaysburg.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll adjourn the Commissioners' Meeting. The next Commissioners' Meeting will be held Thursday, March 14th at 1:00 p.m. Thank you.